Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, April the 4th, 2016. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, March the 21st, 2016. The floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
There's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $39,994.42. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none either.
No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated April the 4th, 2016, in the amount of $39,994.42.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. We have no new business to discuss this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none, thank you.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting in five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, April the 4th, 2016. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. We have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first set is amended minutes for the meeting dated Monday, March the 7th, 2016. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none. And Dan, thank you for amending these, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Yes, after reviewing, I believe it's, all the names are right. Thank you.
Motion.
Comments?
Motion to approve as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. The second set of minutes, Board, is from the previous meeting dated Monday, March the 21st, 2016. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have 31 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $887,128.57. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I do have a question, please.
Sorry?
On page six of the docket. And the fourth entry from the bottom.
Hilltop Farms Excavating?
Yes, $9,743.
That was out of the Parks Department Non-Reverting Fund, and they were working on Hartman Park baseball diamonds, getting them ready for the season.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
That was my only question.
I have none.
No further questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated April the 4th, 2016, in the amount of $887,128.57.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Under unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, we have final resolution for Officer Stevens and Officer Heineger. We'll do these separately, and first one is Officer Stevens, and at this time, I will defer to the City Attorney for consultation. Craig?
Yes, on Officer Stevens, I conducted an audit, as you requested, on the records, the scheduling records of Officer Stevens, and I came up with the exact amount, with the exception, I found an additional 16 personal hours that weren't accounted for. Otherwise, what the chief presented at the last meeting was correct.
Floor is open for questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Can you go through what is owed this officer, Craig?
Sure. He's entitled to 63 hours of compensatory time at an amount of $2,109.87. He had a half hour of holiday return time, and that was at for $16.75, and that's his hourly rate. He had 320 hours of vacation time, which again, his hourly rate is $10,716.80. And then he had, again, 16 personal hours that weren't accounted for. Again, his hourly rate was 535.84, for a total payout of $13,379.26.
There's no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I got a question, in fact, I got a couple of them. On the hourly rate, you said it was 1675, shouldn't that be 3350?
Point, no, it's .5, so it's half.
Right, but I mean, his hourly rate, that's not his hourly rate, that's a half-hour rate.
His hourly rate was at 33...
50.
3350, so isn't that 1675 in that?
Right. No, I agree with you, I thought you stated that it was 1675 an hour.
Oh, no, 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 uh-uh. That's for .5.
Okay.
Right.
All right. I don't see any sick days on here whatsoever.
My understanding is they've been exhausted.
Okay, all right. I'd just like to state again that I will dispute, I will pay it, but I'm going to dispute this because of the way this was handled, and the fact that he should have actually had more than one doctor's excuse because he actually came back to work at one time to work eight hours, or to go to the gun range. And so anyway, just to let you know, I will dispute this also.
Okay. All right, no further questions or comments, ask for a motion to approve the attorney's findings and pay what has been presented this evening for Officer Stevens.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next one up is Officer Heineger, and again, I will defer to the City Attorney for consultation.
Yes, we've been in consultation with Officer Heineger's representation through the Police Department to try to get this worked out. And we came to a resolution, and essentially, the resolution looks something like this. Officer Heineger, his last day of employment was October 30th. Essentially, what we decided to do is allow him to use all this compensatory and vacation and holiday return time up to the point until he provided doctors or medical release on January 11th, 2016. And then at that point, we allowed him to use his sick time up until, I think it was March, what was the meeting, was it March 16th when we last met? My calculation, so in essence, we'd reached an agreement on the 16th. He's been paid an additional nine sick days. So in essence, what he accumulated was 114.5 sick days. He was allowed to use 44 up to the March 16th date, which brought him down to 70.5. I talked to, I was talking to Chris before the meeting, we come up with a little bit of a different calculation, because I took the nine sick days to make it 53 off the 114.5, the 61.5, which made it 37, sorry, 30.75 that'd be paid out. And I think what Chris's calculation is, is to go to the 35.25 and then take nine off that. So you're taking nine off the back end, I'm taking nine off the front end. It amounts to about 4.5 days that he's being paid. Does that sound about right?
Essentially. We met on the 21st, and in good faith, kind of came up with a way that we thought would work and show this to the auditors. And what we'd come up with was that his last day would be on the 21st. Well, they didn't get him completely retired on that day, and they paid him through to April the 1st, as I understand. So he was paid an additional nine sick days, basically. Well, if we, if the Board and, as we had met that day, had decided that the 21st would be his last day, and I thought we were being really more than generous with that, in fact, it was $1,000 more than the chief had calculated, I think that what we're doing here is we're giving him an extra few sick days. And I think that we should take the nine days at the hourly rate that he has been paid through up to April 1st, and then just subtract that from the settlement amount. And what that would look like is you would take nine from the 35, we had calculated, he was left with 35.25 days, and we subtract the nine, which leaves 26.25 days, at his hourly rate of $33.89 per hour, and eight hours a day. You calculate that out, that comes to a payout of $7,116.90. It's really not less than what we had calculated when we had calculated the, I think it was the, yeah, 9,500, it's just, he's already gotten that money in the form of a paycheck up to April 1st. So I think the proper amount would really be the $7,116.90. And I can show you this if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, the difference is, is I took the nine off the front end, you're taking the nine off the back end.
Right, but when you take it off the front end, you're still affording him more...
4.5.
Sick days...
Right.
Than what we had decided on at that meeting.
Okay.
So I guess it's up to the Board what they want to do, but what we had decided on, I think it would be take the nine off of the 35.25, not the nine off of the total amount.
Could you approach with your sheet, or give it to the...
This is just an email that I sent to Craig.
Okay.
But the calculations are here, they're kind of broke on the page here, but there's the calculation, you can read it there.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. So your recommendation, as a counselor, is to take it off the front?
Yes, I believe that when we had, when we met that day, Ed and Sandy and, they had decided, and the City Attorney, that that would be his last day, the 21st. And we had, you know, we had been, I think, pretty generous. We had let him take sick days up to his anniversary date, so that he was given another 31 vacation days and another two personal days. And then we did allow that to go forward and use up all of that time, and then he had still used several sick days up to that point. So at that point, it was decided by Sandy and Ed, and Officer Heineger, and I believe his representation from the union, we're all in agreement, that that should be a fair and just settlement. And now we're given another four and a half days, and I think that we, I think we should stay where we, at what we had decided on that day, which would mean that since he's been paid an additional nine days from the 21st, when we had that meeting, that those nine days should come off of the settlement amount that we had talked about that day.
Do you know what was agreed upon in that, when you first met?
That's accurate.
There it is.
That's accurate.
I have it right here, if you want to look at this how...
Could you read through it, Chris, please?
Okay. According to the Beech Grove Police Department's records of hours worked, statement for week 10/24/15 through 11/6/15, Officer Heineger's last workday was 10/30/15. On this schedule, Officer Heineger was sick the following days, 10/26, 10/27, 10/28, 11/4, and 11/5. Officer Heineger used up the 14 days he had from the previous anniversary year, which takes him to 11/28/15. Starting on 11/29/15, Officer Heineger begins to use his new vacation balance and personal day balance of 33 days. This takes Officer Heineger to January 15 of 2016. Officer Heineger obtained a doctor's excuse on January 11, 2016. On January 18, 2016, Officer Heineger starts using sick days. From this date to today's date of 3/21/16, not counting holidays, Officer Heineger used 44 sick days. From the pay records starting 10/24/15, Officer Heineger shows an accrual of 119.5 sick days. From this, we, from this total, we subtract the five sick days that he had during that initial period that put him out to his anniversary date, leaving a total of 114.5 sick days. Taking the balance of 114.5 sick days minus the 44 days used, leaves Officer Heineger a total of 70.5 sick days. Per ordinance, now, he had used more than, he was supposed to, the City Attorney had found, but we were going to let that stand. Per ordinance, Officer Heineger is to be paid for half of the balance, which is 33.25 sick days, at his hourly rate of 33.89 per hour. So 35.25 times eight times 33.89 equals $9,556.98. So if they didn't get him off of the pay period, or stopped paying him on that date, on the 21st, which is what we had decided, they went ahead and paid him up to April the 1st, which they paid him for nine days in his paycheck. Well, I would say that those nine days are nine of these 35.25 sick days he had left. At that point, that calculation kicks in, that you would subtract the nine days from the 35.25, which would leave 26.25, and when you calculate that out at his hourly rate, it comes up with that figure that you have in front of you, Mayor, about 7,115, is that it?
I have no clue. Yes.
7,160.
Okay. In that thing, does he have any vacation left?
He used, that was what, that's why I said when, that took him through to January from there.
Okay, he doesn't have any vacation?
He, at November 26th, which is his anniversary date, he was awarded another 31 days of vacation and another two personal days. So those 33 days took him through December up into January. At that point, from January, he started using sick days, and that's what brought him to March 21st, when we had that meeting.
Okay. So what I'm getting at, Craig, is what is left that we need to approve a payment for him?
Well, again, the difference between my calculation is, is Chris is calculating the last day as being March 21st, my last day is April 1st. And then again, I took the nine off the front, he's taking the nine off the back. I mean...
Does he have any vacation left?
Zero.
No vacation, does he have any comp time?
No, zero.
No comp time?
No.
Does he have any holiday return time?
Zero.
Okay, so...
We're just dealing with sick time at this point.
Okay. So the only thing that is outstanding is 26.25 hours are days of sick pay for a total of $7,116.90. Is that it?
Yes, sir, that would be the calculation that we came up with when we met that day.
Yes. Chris?
Yes.
When you did your calculation, did Officer Heineger get to his anniversary date?
Originally, no.
Okay. My point being is, he got an additional 31 days vacation, two days personal, so he got an additional 33 days that he should not have been paid for by ordinance.
I think that would be a judgment called, Dan, because what you amount, what happens is, is he had two sick days, which we were discounting because you can't use them in conjunction with retirement, okay? But if we say that the man was entitled to take two sick days without a doctor's excuse, which is what we came up with, it was what part of the concession that I think we made to put this ugly episode behind us, that did push him to his anniversary date, that did award him the 31 vacation days and the two personal days, which then, like I've said here, that put him on through December into January, and then at that point, he had his doctor's excuse, he started using sick days until the day of the meeting, and he'd used 44 up to the day of the meeting. And so at that point, we said, it's done today, you know, you're retiring today, and you get to keep the 44 sick days. And I didn't think we should pull money back out of his pocket, so I said, we'll stop right there, and then we will see what's left, and there were 70, let me see my figures here, there were 70.5 days left, and so we divided that in half, and was going to pay him for 35.25 sick days on the 21st.
Okay. I'm disputing the fact of earlier in the year, when you had the time sheets, he was actually off three consecutive days in a row. He did not have a doctor's excuse. So I understand the two days later on in the year where you're stating that you conceded and gave him two more sick days. My point is, he never made it to his anniversary date, we do not owe him the 31 days of vacation, nor the two personal days. He should have been taken off the books at that time. And I even questioned the two days, I think my calculation was even more than two days.
That was the way I calculated it at first also. But like I say, the gentleman had put in, what was it, like 26 years or something with the...
I'm not disputing it. He was a great officer, I don't have any problem with that. What I have a problem with is this was misused, even in the attorney's statement.
I don't disagree with you, because...
And, you know, he used the sick time, I think he's been adequately reimbursed for what he has gotten, and I do not believe for one second that we owe him 33 days of pay. And that's my contention, and that's what I'll stick to. And, you know, this Board will have to make that decision.
I think we're doing semantics here, because this is a settlement, and we've resolved a potential claim, and this is what it looks like, and this is what it is. This is how we framed it out.
Well, Craig, you can't break ordinance. If ordinance states that he didn't make it to his anniversary date, we cannot give him 33 days of pay.
What's his anniversary date? What do you...
Was the 26th...
26th November.
Yeah. And he did not make it to that time, even using sick time and everything else.
Yeah, I mean, this is a legal settlement. I mean, this is, this is not the Stevens, this is another issue. We resolved the claim with him, and it is what it is. This is the way we framed it out.
Yeah, I, this question for Chris, as we're working through, so are you saying, just so I understand, so if he asks me, I can explain it.
This was, this is what we can't...
Right, but what I'm asking is, so you're saying he's been paid nine days, and you took it off the settlement amount?
Correct.
Okay. So now, are we gonna, so would that mean that his retirement date would be the day that we agreed upon, and that would be the day that we would have to vote on? So he's been paid a portion of his settlement already?
Correct.
And then he's going to get the remainder?
Correct.
Okay. So what is, what your calculation, if I understand, Craig, was that he hasn't had, the date hadn't been decided on, and you were using a different date than what was agreed upon?
Yeah, wait, yeah, I mean, I used it as his last day being April 1st, so I took the nine days off the top and not the bottom, like Chris.
So I think at that meeting, wouldn't we agree that it was the 21st?
I was just wanting to make sure I understood. So the question would be, we pay him at your settlement based on an April 1st date, or we pay him the remainder of the settlement based on the date that you guys settled with Officer Heineger?
It's a 4.5 day difference.
Okay, but it's just, it's a question of what day we decided, but that was the amount, I mean, you talked to that, talked about that with Officer Heineger then, I think I stepped out at that point, when you guys were going over the final numbers.
And I think he was happy with what we had come up with that day, as I believe you as his...
Right, right.
...representation was...
I just wanted to get clarification, I didn't know where you were coming with it, I hadn't seen...
Yeah, I just handed my paperwork to Dennis. All I did was just take nine days off of that.
Which was what was, you guys agreed upon with Officer Heineger then.
Right, and then calculated it out the same way, and that comes out to 7,115.
Okay, but you're contending he's already been paid a portion of that settlement amount since that day?
Correct, from the 21st to the 1st.
And then this would just be paying out the remainder?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. All right, I just, I wanted to make sure I didn't get it talked about.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from Board members?
Are you done with me, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Wouldn't his anniversary date be March 21st, then?
No.
Why not?
His higher, his anniversary date that he hired was January 26th?
November the 26th.
Okay, so he's still employed at that point, right?
Well, he's still receiving checks, just like he was employed. He got a check Friday. So no one's ever informed me of any of this, and I question when that decision was made, and I question it at the last meeting, because you cannot make a decision at the open, because of the open door law, it was a meeting that was held that was not a proper meeting, it was not properly noticed, and you can't make a decision, you guys said you made a decision, you can't do that. And I dispute the whole 33 days, he should not get paid for one of them.
Can I make a comment?
Yep.
Okay, when we met that last time, we did not make a decision, we did not come to an agreement, we had a proposal. Here is the proposal. So we are now recalculating again, we have gone through calculations till we're all blue in the face. So my recommendation is go with what our City Attorney says, it's all right here, and we move forward. There, you could calculate this thing to death, I've done it myself, I've came up with about six, seven different calculations, everybody's going to see it different. My suggestion is, we go with what the Attorney, he's done the audit, he's looked at the books, we go with his recommendation. But I do want to make that clear, we, as the folks that sat down in that meeting, did not come to an agreement.
I will...
If we came to an agreement, his payout would have been $9,556.98, just as you proposed. Again, this was nothing more than a proposal, not an agreement, not a decision, not a payout.
When was the decision made?
Well, it's not been made.
It's not made, we're talking about it now.
It's made right now.
There has not been a decision.
That's why we're discussing this, so that here in a moment, they can decide that.
Well, I thought Craig was saying there was a decision made.
When did I say that?
I thought you just said that a couple minutes ago.
Let's just keep going forward, let's not bicker over who said what.
All right, is there any other comments or questions? All right. 26.25 sick days for a total not to exceed $7,116.90. No vacation days payback, no comp time payback, no hourly rate, or holiday return rate payback. Any comments or questions?
I have none.
Yes, I do. I want, I've never seen any documentation on either officer, the audit, anything else, I cannot pay that on what you guys have given me five minutes ago, or 15 minutes. So I need to be provided the documentation on what was done on the audit, and I don't think that's unreasonable.
You're looking at it.
Well, there's got to be more than that, where's the time sheets, where's the sick pay? I've been asking for documentation for sick days for months.
Dan, again, this is a legal settlement, this is the way we mapped it out. Are you going to refuse to pay a claim that the Board has ordered on?
I'm going to dispute it. I will pay it, but I need documentation. First thing the State Board of Accounts is going to say is, I want to see everything, how this was done, and how it was, it came up to.
I can give you, yeah, I can give you Chris's email to me, I can give you my letter... I can give you, yeah, I can give you Chris's email to me, I can give you my letter. Exactly, here it is. So, and again, it's a, this is a legal settlement.
Well, we'll find out whether it's legal or not.
Can I, can I ask that somebody from the Board of Works contact the State Board of Accounts to find out what they want, not what Dan said they want? Is that, is that something that we can find out?
You'll find that out in the audit.
I'm asking the Board of Works, not you.
Well, that's fine.
Is that something that's something to do, find out what they actually want yourself?
I'm sure.
Thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to pay Officer Heinegger seven thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents in sick day benefits. No vacation, no comp time, no HRT. Motion to approve.
I have a question. So that's a different figure than what's on Craig's, Craig's note here. So what are we going with, the new calculation or the audit?
We're going by. Motion to approve seven thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cent payment to Officer Heinegger.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. I'll also ask the board to change the retirement date that was approved of April fifteenth to March twenty-first. Motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll make said motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. And then, Counselor, if you can provide any and all documentation, including time sheets to the clerk for verification, so that we can pay the claim.
Yes, I will. And again, it's a legal settlement.
Okay. All right, thank you. That concludes unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. Under new business, two thousand and fifteen ambulance write-offs. I'll defer to the Fire Chief. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I come before you this evening asking for the approval of ambulance billing write-offs for 2015. Med Bell has sent a attached summary sheet that shows the itemized breakdown. The total amount of ambulance billing write-off for 2015 is two million six hundred and sixty-one nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. And the ambulance write-offs, this is, we have to do this each year, and it's just the amount that the provider has to remove from his books. As you all know, there are two types of write-offs. One's contractual write-offs, and the other one's is an adjustment. The contractual write-offs are those, they're excess billed amount. We can only accept so much from Medicare and Medicaid payments, and the remaining in that amount is written off. And it just clears out the books for 2015.
Thank you, Chief. The floor is open for questions or comments.
This has seemed a little high compared to last year. Is that about normal, Rob?
This is normal with the, just the overall adjustments in our ambulance billing and the, the volume of runs we are currently doing.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
No further questions. I'll ask for a motion to approve the ambulance write-off for 2015 in the amount of two million six hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. While you're up there, Chief, how's the Medicare right, or the Medicare reimbursement doing?
I know we are due for another disbursement. I'd have to defer to the Clerk Treasurer, see if that came in yet as they...
As of today, no, it still has not came in. They've done the work on it, and hopefully it will be coming in any time.
This year, with that disbursement money, we're going to continue with the AED program, the community CPR, and we're going to be able to do some reach out and place some AEDs throughout the community. So we're looking forward to getting that money in and reinvesting it back into the city of Beach Grove and our community.
While you're up there, you gave me startling statistics this afternoon, about the number of ambulance runs in February, or March.
Yes, I almost kind of like to ask Councilman Brooks how many ambulance runs the city of Beach Grove did when you were on the department gym, roughly per year?
Per year?
When you first started?
When I first started, we had two horses.
They had two horses on a buggy.
We probably run maybe a hundred times, a hundred and twenty-five.
Okay, in, in the month of March, we did four hundred and sixteen ambulance runs. So you could see the volume that these guys are just out there doing. It's staggering, is correct. Our ambulance is, continues to stay busy within the city of Beach Grove. We also operate outside areas within our mutual aid district of Beach Grove. So we are very proud of our people, and they're out there working.
Any questions for the Chief?
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes miscellaneous business. Comments from board members?
I'll have, I have done tonight.
I do have a comment. On March twentieth, Howard County lost one of their police officers, Carl Coons. What a very sad day for that community. And I was watching the funeral procession, there was a lot of representation from a lot of police from around the entire state. And I said, when I was watching Channel thirteen, and I saw Mark Parker there representing Beach Grove, what a, what an awesome sight that was. So thank you to our police department and all the police officers that serve our community. So thank you very much.
Okay, with that, motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
The meeting is adjourned at six forty-four P.M. We will convene again on Monday, April the eighteenth at six P.M. We are adjourned. The City Council meets at seven P.M. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove, and at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, April the fourth, two thousand and sixteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Ed Bell, District Two.
Elizabeth Lamping, District One.
Chris Duffer, District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you, Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, we have a couple of special presentations this evening. The first two, Ethan Smiley and Eli Shockley will be rescheduled for May. There was a scheduling conflict. The first off the bat would be recognition of the Beach Grove Middle School eighth-grade boys' basketball team. They won their conference champion. So this evening, we want to recognize them for the good work that they've done. And if their coach and team could come up, we'll give them a certificate of recognition. Guys, stand right up there in the middle. Here, Larry. Their coach is Larry Williams. Larry's going to talk a little bit about their season and introduce the boys. But on behalf of the city of Beach Grove, congratulations for their conference champion, Beach Grove Middle School eighth-grade boys' basketball. Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you.
All right. Who you got up there?
We've got Isaac Stenit. We've got Ben Pick, Anthony Moreno, Josh Copenhaver, Tyron Washington, and Caleb Arsenal. We have quite a few kids that couldn't make it tonight, but we've got about half of them here. These guys were, I was blessed to have these guys. These kids work extremely hard. If I'd asked them to come in the morning for a shootaround, they'd come in an hour, you know, before school. Whatever I asked them to do, they did. And they worked extremely hard in the offseason. And we was over, our overall record, we played in a fall league, and we had our school, was overall forty-four and eleven, which was pretty impressive. We played against, you know, some four A and five A schools, and they competed hard against those guys, were able to compete with those guys too. And just overall, just a nice group of kids that worked extremely hard, and hopefully will be real successful in high school if they keep it up.
All right, thank you, Larry. Are these kids going to play next year as freshmen?
They will play as freshmen. Hopefully, we'll get a couple of them playing JV ball next year as freshmen. If they work real hard this summer, they might have a chance of, a chance at that.
And Zeke was the center, wasn't he?
He was my center, yes.
All right, congratulations, guys. All right, thank you. This evening, I have invited our friends from Citizens Energy to come and speak with us. We've all heard recently from their CEO about the rate increases that are going to happen countywide. And I, earlier in the year, I had sent you a, a little letter concerning the increase that we made as a result of Citizens' increase. But there's more to it, and I've invited our friends to come out and speak with you. Joe Sutherland, Joe is the Director of Governmental and Environmental Affairs, our Legislative Affairs. Jeff Wilman is the Vice President of the Water and Sewer Utility. And Jamie Delyard is, I think, the Director of Wastewater Management. So they have some literature to pass out, and, and they want to talk to you about what's going to happen over the next year concerning water and delivery and treatment of wastewater that we generate. So, gentlemen, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My name is Joe Sutherland. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Citizens Energy Group. The mayor asked us to come and see you, to kind of give you a broad brush of what the state of water and wastewater is, what drives costs, and those kinds of things with respect not only to Beach Grove, but to our system generally throughout Marion County. So a short presentation that you'll be able to keep. I'll try to run through it rather quickly, and feel free to interrupt with questions to the extent you have anything. A little bit about us on that first slide, with respect to the water operation, three hundred and twenty thousand customers, eight wholesale customers. One of the things I'd always like to emphasize is, we've got a very diverse resource mix. And I'll talk a little about, about that on the next slide, but that benefits us a great deal. And you see the map, and basically, all of Marion County, except Speedway and Lawrence, is served by us with water. Source and supply, I mentioned the diversity that we have. Basically, multiple service, surface water options plus groundwater, about eighty-five percent, fifteen percent. The White River and Central Canal system is what we depend on most for sixty percent of our supply. We also get a large percentage from the Geist Fall Creek system. And then Eagle Creek, that's a flood control reservoir. So we only depend on that for about nine percent of our supply. And then we have multiple wellfields for groundwater. On the next slide, what I want to emphasize is, we plan for, to serve the system peak, which is about, over the last ten years, it's been two hundred and thirty-two million gallons per day. One of the things I want you to see on this slide is, our usage is the red line, and the temperature, average temperature, May through August is the blue line. So you can see how those lines move together. So it, it makes logical sense. As the temperatures get hotter, our customers use more water. As temperatures decrease, and theoretically, there's more rain, we use less water. We made a lot of system improvements. As you know, we've had the systems since 2011, when we acquired it from the city of Indianapolis. We've invested countywide, system-wide, two hundred and thirty million dollars on the water utility. We've concentrated on system integrity and reliability. Real success story with fire hydrants. We've replaced annually double the number of fire hydrants that were being replaced previous to our ownership. And that has really seen, when those fire hydrants are not routinely changed out, you get a lot of frozen hydrants in the winter. In 2010, there were thirty-one system-wide frozen hydrants. In 2015 winter, there's only one. So, so we can see the benefit of that kind of program. A lot of emphasis on water main replacement. Targeting World War II-era pipe, and I'm going to talk about that the next couple of slides, just kind of keep that in mind, that seventy-eight percent of all water main breaks is this World War II pipe. We're also stretching capital dollars through efficiencies that we've been able to find and operate in the system. We are performing the same number of water projects per year for about seven and a half million dollars less. And that's just something that, that benefits all water customers, system-wide. On the next page, high failure water mains, and you can see the bar graph there. So I'll direct your attention to the green bars, nineteen forty-five to nineteen sixty-four pipe. That is cast iron pipe with thinner walls. They have a much shorter lifespan, and they tend to cause us more problems than even the one-hundred-year-old pipe. Now, if you look at that top right corner, so think about how the county was expanding in that era, nineteen forty-five to nineteen sixty-four. And that's where that pipe is. You can kind of draw a circle around that. And I'll direct you to kind of our southeast corner, and you'll see Beach Grove in the middle of one of those blocks. So that tells you there is a lot of World War II pipe in the city, and that's where you get a lot of main breaks, which is something we've tried to concentrate on, specific to Beach Grove. So let's talk about that. Many targeted dollars to aging water mains in the city. Main Street, Emerson to Thirteenth, also on Eighth Avenue, Eleventh and Thirteenth Avenue. We have, have projects planned for 2016 on Sixteenth Avenue and in 2017 on Twentieth. All targeting dollars towards aging water mains. We've also put in a new booster station at the Beach Grove water tank to improve water supply and quality. Overall, those projects have led to over six million dollars of investment in the water system, in the city of Beach Grove specifically, since we've had ownership. And that's in addition to the Kinetrix investment. That is not water, but it's still investment, right? Twenty-four million dollars in Beach Grove, fifteen permanent jobs through that, which we're very proud of. Moving to wastewater, you can see our map also. Lawrence, Speedway, Ben Davis, and Beach Grove are the gaps in the county in the wastewater system. Two hundred and thirty thousand retail customers and seven wholesale customers. Wastewater is going through significant transformation throughout the county. Since 2011, we've invested over nine hundred and fifty million dollars territory-wide. We're eliminating seven hundred and fifty leaky septic tanks per year. You've probably heard about the Deep Rock Tunnel, Dig Indy Tunnel. I've got some information. It's not specific to Beach Grove, but I thought it would give you an idea of where that money is being invested and the impact that it is making for sustainability of the rivers and streams throughout the county. So that is a consent decree, USCPA. We are under bylaw to do, put dollars towards combined sewer to eliminate the overflows into the rivers and streams throughout the city. And, and we're doing that in a number of ways. If you'll turn, turn over, you'll see the combined sewer system. If you look on the left map, that yellow or gold area, that's where storm water and sanitary water... where storm water and sanitary water is combining. And just simply, the city has outgrown the ability of the sewer system to keep up, just simply stated. And there's a better map on the right side, which shows you that area and kind of overlays to so you have a sense of where that is. And if you go over to the next page, you kind of get a better picture. Again, this does not extend to Beech Grove, but I think there's indirect benefit to Beech Grove through these dollars because we're, by 2025, going to take ninety-seven percent of the six billion gallons of sewage that overflows into rivers and streams throughout our service territory. We're going to capture that through the tunnel. Two-point-two billion dollar investment. We're three-hundred million dollars under budget. We're two years ahead of schedule. It's twenty-eight miles in length all in total. If you look on the map, that bottom-left corner, the Southport Treatment Plant, which is at Southport in Tibbs, on the southwest side is where it starts. So it goes all the way to the fairgrounds, through the Fall Creek-White River Tunnel. Two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep, eighteen feet in diameter. If, think about how a subway is bored, that's the kind of machine that's underneath the ground, two-hundred-and-fifty feet deep at Southport and Tibbs, digging the tunnel. And I already referenced, ninety-seven percent of that six billion gallons will be captured by that tunnel. One of the things that all water and sewer utilities struggle with daily is balancing affordability while still maintaining the investments that I've described. It's something that calls for great creativity from utility representatives to regulators to public officials like yourselves. All utility bills are going up, whether it's electricity, natural gas, water, wastewater. And it's driven by the need to invest in all the aging infrastructure that we're faced with. The mayor mentioned the rate cases that we have before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. We are regulated by them, if you were not aware of that. We filed a rate case in December of 2015. No, check that, June of 2015. And it, a settlement was reached of all parties in the case in December. It is before the utility commission currently. They are reviewing it for reasonableness. If they approve that settlement, rates on average throughout the entire service territory will increase by sixteen percent. And that is under review right now. The wastewater case was filed in September of 2015. It was also settled last month. Again, that will be before the utility commission. They will make a decision if they approve the settlement as submitted. They, rates in 2016 will go up by twenty-one-and-a-half percent and rates in 2017 will go up five percent. About seventy-five percent of that increase is directly attributable to the tunnel and the consent decree that we are obligated to make. The last item on wastewater, in the wastewater area, Beech Grove is a wholesale satellite contract customer for us. In our 2014 wastewater case, the IURC said that wholesale satellite contracts that we inherited at acquisition, they ruled that those contracts were no longer fulfilling, no longer meeting the cost to deliver service. They have asked for that subsidy to be addressed. It has not been addressed yet. We were in discussions with the commission, encouraged them to set that issue aside. Let us have the 2016 wastewater case. Give communities an opportunity to understand the issue, understand the feelings of the commission, and be able to really look how that impacts each community. Beech Grove is one of those communities. There are seven communities. Some are short, some are long. And in those cases, it is in the best interest of each community to spread that out. Maybe five years, maybe ten years, maybe more, to bring that gap together. And so we believe the commission will take a look at that after the wastewater case is over, probably as early as June of this year. That's all I have. Be glad to take any questions. Again, we're thrilled at the partnership that we have with the city of Beech Grove, and it's our pleasure to be here this evening. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, I think I had mentioned this earlier this year when you first convened, that maybe later on this year, you are going to have to make a couple of difficult decisions. You just heard that our rates are going to go up by at least twenty-seven percent this year. And that doesn't include the settlement from 2011. That, you can appreciate it if you deal with it every day like the clerk and I do, the staggering amount of money that we pay from a settlement above and beyond our every, our monthly wastewater fees. And that is to do upgrades to the Southport Treatment Plant where our wastewater flows. So I just want to prepare you. And I think it was good that these folks come out tonight to set the stage because our rates are going to change here. And we have to be responsible enough to raise them accordingly to remain solvent. But I suspect Citizens will be back maybe this fall to talk about some other options. And I would certainly entertain you paying close attention to what they have to say. So I appreciate them coming out. They've been good for us for the last four or five years. And I look forward to continuing to work with those folks. So thank you very much. In May, our friends from Power and I will be out to discuss with you their proposed rate increase through the IURC as well. So the moral of the story is the rates are going up. We are not the cause of the rates, but we are the messenger and, but it needs to be out there and we need to be upfront with where we're going with this. So they'll be out in May as well. So thanks for your cooperation. Kelly's here with Mayor Hogsitt's liaison. Kelly?
Thanks, and thanks for having me tonight. I apologize for being a few minutes late. I was at the I-69 public meeting over at Perry Meridian High School tonight. And so many of you probably saw in the newspaper or got my email that was the press release from NDOT about State Route 37 being chosen for the final leg of I-69. And lots of people have very strong feelings on that. So we are trying to work with NDOT. I did get some good news from the initial message that was put out. Their website is actually very helpful. But Southport Road is going to be an interchange. That wasn't listed in their initial press release and had a lot of people concerned. Also, talking with the folks from NDOT tonight, we have a lot of time and room still to negotiate what this final leg is going to look like, exactly where it's going to go, and what streets are going to go over or under or become interchanges. Martinsville stayed very involved through the whole process and they were able to get a pedestrian walk because their high school is right there. So those are things to keep in mind that, yes, the State Route 37 has been chosen, but there's still room for us to have input. So I would encourage you to visit their website, email me, email the mayor, and we'll make sure that our suggestions are heard. So. Also, Citizens, it's great that they're here. I was hoping that they would come to Beech Grove. They're coming over to Franklin Township as well. They've already been in Perry Township and done a presentation. So they're doing a very good job of trying to go everywhere and explain the need for the rate increases. Rate increases are not anything that anybody wants. And they're kind of all happening at once. So that makes it even more difficult to swallow. But appreciate you guys being here. I know Beech Grove is doing their own recycling thing, and that's great. But I wanted to let you know that the city of Indianapolis, we are trying to be like Beech Grove. We're having a public open house to talk about recycling. It's this Wednesday. Mayor Hogsitt's going to be there. They're going to be taking suggestions from the community since the Covanta deal is no longer an option. What are we going to do now as a city as far as recycling goes? So I know you guys have your own thing, but if anybody is interested, that's at the Garfield Parks Art Center, Wednesday from four to six. Then your Beech Grove Chamber is meeting on the fourteenth at eleven-thirty. And they've got a really cool program planned. Donald Davidson from Indianapolis Motor Speedway, the historian there, is going to come and talk about the historical significance of the one-hundredth running of the Indy 500. So if you're available at lunchtime on that day, I'd encourage you to attend. And then the Franklin Township Civic League is hosting a candidates forum. And you might know some people that are going to be there. It's going to be April 27th at seven o'clock. And some of our counselors and our people trying to run for state senate now that Pat Miller is retiring at the end of the year. That is a forum where you can go and listen to what they have to say about the issues and learn from them. So. Also, make sure you have on your calendars the Perry Cultural Festival. Last year was the first one of these that they had. It's April 29th and 30th. And they've brought in Indy Eleven this year to help. So last year, they had a soccer tournament. This year, Indy Eleven's running the soccer tournament forum. So that'll be awesome. And a lot of the soccer games are going to be played on that Friday, the 29th, and then on the 30th. We have a lot of cultures down here on the south side, and all of those will be representative at the festival. So it'd be great if you could go. There's good food, there's dancing, soccer. So it'd be a good day. And then Animal Care and Control is looking for people to come and adopt animals because we have a lot of animals right now. They're also looking for volunteers at the shelter. A lot of the animals don't get to go outside because they don't have enough volunteers to take them outside even during the day. And then also for foster parents because you can just take them out of the shelter for a few days. And that's something that they haven't had for a while, right? So if anybody's interested in that, you can call Animal Care and Control. And then finally, I think you guys are familiar with the Route for the Brave Walk Across America because it's one of your own. Kevin Winton, a Beech Grove middle school teacher, is going to be walking more miles than I think I'll walk in my whole life, I think. He's going to be doing that. And there's a fundraiser for them. It's going to be on April 12th, and it's from four to nine-thirty. It's at the New Bethel Ordinary. And it'll be a fun night just to go and eat there. But if you can't eat there, you can get carryout. But all proceeds from that night, fifteen percent are being donated to Kevin and his cause for Route for the Brave Walk Across America. So that's all I had. Do you guys have anything for me tonight? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Kelly. This evening, counsel, you had two sets of minutes, one from the February 16th, 2016 special meeting. At this time, the floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. If there's no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the special meeting minutes dated February 16th, 2016.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The second set of minutes is from the previous meeting dated March the 7th, 2016. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll defer to counselor for public comments. Anyone sign up this evening?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Move to committee reports. I don't believe the high school principal is with us tonight. Greenscape Commission has submitted a report. I did not hear from the RDC. The ABC has submitted a report. Compliance Division has submitted a report. I'll defer to the clerk for financial report. Dan?
Good evening, councilors. We just recently kicked off Invoice Cloud. The program allows the sewage customers to pay their bills online or by telephone. The charge to pay online is a dollar ninety-five, and the charge to pay by phone is a dollar ninety-five and an additional seventy-five cents. Also, the service offers the customers the ability to sign up for auto bill pay. We still cannot accept credit card payments in City Hall. State statute does not allow us to pay service charges for credit card payments, and it is against Visa compliance to charge a fee for face-to-face payments. I have included the regulation below. Customers may now sign up for paperless billing also. The charge to the city for the service offered by Invoice Cloud are fifty dollars per month, which in time will be recaptured from the reduced cost created from the paperless billing. The only bond payment that was due and paid in March was a 2004 SRF payment in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars, fifty-nine cents. The city website continues to grow and is a great asset to the citizens. It is a valuable resource to many. Community events can be added free of charge by emailing me at dan.mcmillan@beechgrove.com. Thanks to the website volunteers who continue to keep it updated at no cost to the taxpayers. Financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beechgrove.com. The bank balances are listed below. The only one I want to point out is the corporate bank account, and its balance is three million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. And this was as of the first of the month. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you. Respectfully submitted, Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasure, City of Beech Grove. And the only other thing I would like to add to that is the recent hailstorm, we've had tons of people come into the city. And just for any resident out there, there has been no one that has been authorized or received a permit to go door-to-door. So if you have anyone that is coming around door-to-door, you know, you can call City Hall, you can call the police department, whoever. And they are not allowed to do this. If you call them and request for them to come out, they can do that, but they cannot go door-to-door. So I know there's some seniors that certainly do not want to open their doors up to some strangers. That's all I've got.
Questions for the clerk?
This is where I got that nice pen.
You were going door-to-door.
No, I wasn't. It was on my door.
All right. Public safety report, our fire chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Like to report to you on the month of March. Very extremely busy month for the fire and our EMS. Our, I'll touch on our emergency medical services. Our ambulance has made over four-hundred-and-sixteen runs for the month of March. They continue to stay extremely busy and very proud of what those guys do each and every day. Fire runs within the city. We had a great month. No fire loss in the city in March. We did, SIS Beech Grove Police with a vehicle into a building over 5428 Pearl Bush. It was a vehicle that drove through part of the building. We checked for structural damage. The vehicle was gone by the time we arrived. Like for, to remind everyone, in case you missed a couple of weeks ago, daylight savings, we always remind everyone, check your smoke detectors and change the batteries at this time. So please remember it's spring and please do so. At this time, we just completed three-day class with Mobile Eyes. That is our inspection report. It's a new online report where our inspector can go out and with a mobile tablet, do the fire inspections, email it, and it streamlines the entire program. So we're very excited about getting this program up and going, and it's very compatible. The data that he inputs will be available to our firefighters on their computers inside their apparatus. their apparatus. So, it, it's very up-to-date, live information. When he receives it, it automatically uploads to our guys, so it's very good. If anyone has any questions about the fire department, I'd be glad to answer. Please take a look at the monthly reports we put out on there. It touches on fire runs, EMS runs, our maintenance reports, and prevention. Maintenance has been extremely bad this year. We've had a couple large expenses with fire truck repair in the month of March, over eight thousand dollars on one engine, so we continue to fight the good fight keeping those trucks in service on the road, but it is very costly. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer at this time.
Chief, I just have a comment. It's kind of old business, and I see that Chief Pierce is not here tonight, so if you could just pass along once again, his good work on that grant. I don't know if we really talked about the thank you part of that, so I just wanted to know if you could pass that along to him.
Absolutely will. We're going to have the Kubota in the Little Lake Parade, and it'll be the first time we're having it out in the community, so we're excited, kind of showing it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
From our police chief, Mark.
Good evening, council members. This will be a report from March. Sort of later in the month, we got a little bit busier with some more major crimes. We investigated a shots fired run at a vehicle in the area of Fifth and Main. It involved a brown van and a white passenger car. We had a witness, but the vehicle that was shot at never returned and never made a police report. But we have an idea who owns the van, if they ever return to where we think they live, and we can find the van, that'd be good. We had attempted strong-armed robbery. That means they didn't use a gun, in Willow Glen Apartments. It was a couple males, or at least one male, that tried to take a car. It wasn't successful, but later that day, they were successful over at the area of Thompson and Carson. And I've got a little kudos to our detectives and IMPD detectives. They reached out to our school resource officer, Mark Parker, and he was on vacation, which they're out of school, and he was able to get pictures, and these are some old Beech Grove kids, that they were able to identify as some of the suspects. So, working with conjunction with all the detectives and the school officer and the school people, able to identify some of the people involved with that. Remember to call eight-one-one before you dig. It probably saves the fire department us some problems of maybe some rescues. And April twenty-third, the Little Lake Parade, the police and the fire will be involved in that, directing traffic and helping people through there. And to read Dan's information, if you have a solicitor, call the police, call the dispatcher nine-one-one, and they are supposed to dispatch us out to find if they do have permits. There are certain organizations by state law that are allowed, but people that are selling home improvement or things like that, they're not allowed, and we will try to rectify that with citations or whatever it takes to get them to correct it. And we have ordered some new, we have one new police vehicle, we've ordered some more. They're being paid through our criminal investigations fund, and some of that is also coming out of the public safety tax, which isn't, I don't think it's anything that is an extra tax on the city. It's something that the city of Indianapolis arranged for public safety, which we're grateful that we can buy those vehicles and equipment. Any questions?
Has there been any changes to that, the CIF?
Last week, I got a notice that they will start it up. It might take a couple months because they will go through all the applications again. They just held them almost in a trust fund to where they'll start processing them again, and hopefully it won't take too long. They said a couple of months maybe to start getting that fund going again.
It says one eight seven seven free rough.
Well, they might be in a little bit of trouble.
Thanks, Chief.
Before we move on, one more plug for the Citizens Utility. Every month on your sewer bill, you get, on water bill, you get to check smoke detectors, and Citizens Energy has partnered with our fire department. We did like fifty detectors to our fire department to pass out in the community, so this isn't the first time that Citizens Energy has done that, so that's just another service that they provide. They don't really talk about a whole lot, they just do it, so I appreciate that very much. That concludes committee reports. Under unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting, general ordinance number three, two thousand sixteen, concerning abandoned vehicles is up for third reading this evening. Yes, sir?
Make the motion to read by title only?
The motion to read by title only.
I'll second that.
We'll do it by individual vote, starting on my bar left.
I agree with title only.
Title only.
Yes, title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
I'll ask the clerk to read general ordinance number three, two thousand sixteen, into the record by title only, please.
General ordinance number three, two thousand sixteen, is an ordinance that amends Chapter one-on-one of the City of Beech Grove Code of Ordinances pursuant to abandoned vehicles.
Thank you. General ordinance number three, two thousand sixteen, is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make the motion to be approved, general ordinance number three.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. For the audience, this ordinance allows our compliance division, our code enforcement, to tag vehicles that are not properly parked in yards and et cetera, and it does everything but the actual towing. That would be subject to the police officer, but the first two phases of it allows our General ordinance number four, two thousand sixteen, is up for third and final reading this evening.
I'd make the motion to read by title only.
Motion to read by title only. A second, please.
Second.
We'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Agree with title only.
Title only.
Yeah, title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
General ordinance number four, two thousand sixteen, introduced on third reading, and I'll ask the clerk to read it by title only, please.
General ordinance number four, two thousand sixteen, is an ordinance that amends Chapter one-fifteen of the Code of Ordinances pursuant to licensing and monitoring of pawn shops and pawn brokers.
Thank you. General ordinance number four, two thousand sixteen, is up for third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. While they're voting, this ordinance, if a pawn shop is operational or moves into Beech Grove, they're required to pay a fee of three hundred and twenty dollars and be subject to inspection by the police, and their infidary program has to be on an approved program by General ordinance number five, two thousand sixteen, is up for third and final reading this evening.
I would move that we'd read it by title only.
I'll second.
We will take a vote on, beginning on my left.
Agree with title only.
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 Thank you. General ordinance number five, two thousand sixteen, is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
General ordinance number five, two thousand sixteen, is an ordinance that amends Chapter ninety-six of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beech Grove concerning regulations for trash collection.
Thank you. General ordinance number five, two thousand sixteen, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. This is a really good ordinance, and the council should be applauded for this, for the public. This ordinance changes the rules on how trash is picked up. After thirty days, if you have a trash bag outside of your tote container, it will not be picked up. All plastic bags are required to be in the tote, and then also from an internal policy, public works employees who handle trash will not be allowed to open the lid and put their hands down into the trash. This ordinance has been brought forward as a result of contaminated needles, more contaminated needles in trash. So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect the DPW employees who are picking up the trash every day. It's a good ordinance. General ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, is up for reading on second, approval on second reading only. At this time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beech Grove City Council of Beech Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds, named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. The fund name is the Rainy Day Fund, and the capital outlays, the amount requested is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Amount approved by fiscal body, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Total for the Rainy Day Fund, amount requested, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Amount approved by fiscal body, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Whereas Beech Grove City Council desires to execute HUD grant B-oh-nine-dash-SP-dash-In dash zero-zero-eight-eight and provide funding and cash flow for the same, now therefore, section two, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that a new fund is established for the administrator of said grant. Section three, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that the above additional appropriation amount is to be transferred to the new grant fund to maintain positive cash flow. Section three, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that all reimbursements from the grant will be transferred from the grant fund back to the Rainy Day Fund.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the additional appropriation grant, ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, on second reading only.
Make motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Additional appropriation grant funding ordinance, general ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening.
I would make the motion to read it by title only.
I respectfully, I can on this one because it's only one page.
All right.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beech Grove City Council of Beech Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds, named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. The fund name is the Rainy Day Fund. Amount requested for capital outlays is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Amount approved by fiscal body, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Total for Rainy Day Fund, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred requested, and the amount approved by fiscal body, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Whereas the Beech Grove City Council desires to execute HUD grant B-oh-nine-dash-SP-dash-In dash oh-zero-zero-eight-eight and provide funding and cash flow for the same, now therefore, section two, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that a new fund is established for the administration of said grant. Section three, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that the above additional appropriation amount is to be transferred to the new grant fund to maintain positive cash flow. Section three, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council, that all reimbursements from the grant will be transferred from the grant fund back to the Rainy Day Fund, adopted as fourth day of April, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve general ordinance number six, two thousand sixteen, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. For the public, the city received a grant from HUD back in two thousand and nine for two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, and it was for an at-risk youth program at Hornet Park. The city never finalized the grant, so it just stayed in limbo until January this year. We received a letter from HUD asking if we were going to continue with the grant or not. We've decided to do it, and this is one of the final steps. We're in the process of registering with HUD. Dan is the authorized user as clerk, so we're going through the final motions, and then we'll be able to utilize that grant. So, and I appreciate the council's action on that this evening. This is something we weren't aware of six months ago.
I just wanted to say on the date of this grant, that it was good work on your part and also Dan, as well as Jeff Peters, that we got this active, so. And I, my understanding is we're looking at the fall for the reimbursement back into the Rainy Day Fund. Is that approximate?
We haven't, we weren't going to do anything with it until the council approved it, and we're not going to do anything until we have all of our documentation through HUD, and they tell us it's okay. So, we haven't done anything with it yet, but it's our intent to keep you informed as we proceed. we proceed. That concludes unfinished business for this evening. Under new business, we have a series of four new ordinances that will be heard this evening on first reading only. All four of those.
We didn't do General Ordinance 7.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's Dave's ordinance. Sorry about that, Dave.
That's all right. I can't, I can't read it. I didn't bring my glasses.
I'm sorry. General Ordinance Number 7, 2016, is up for second reading only.
I'll move to read it by title only.
Need a second?
Second.
And we will vote individually, beginning on my left.
Agree with title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 7, 2016, is up for approval on second reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number 7, 2016, is an ordinance that amends Article 130 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to public peace, morals, and safety.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 7, 2016, up for approval on second reading only. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 7 on second reading.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third and final reading at the May 2 meeting. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business for this evening. Under new business, we have four ordinances to be heard this evening. All four ordinances will be placed into the Personnel Manual once it's completed. So, we'll start with General Ordinance Number 8, 2016, is up for first reading, and I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
I would move my, we'd read it by title only?
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
We'll start with a vote on my left.
Agree with title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 8, 2016, is up for first reading only, and I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record by title only.
General Ordinance Number 8, 2016, is an ordinance that amends Article 9 of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual pursuant to the use of sick leave.
Thank you. The floor is open, or before I open the floor for questions or comments, I'm going to defer to the clerk to explain what this ordinance is about. So, Dan?
Well, we've just been trying to update our Personnel Manual as we go along, and so what we're trying to do is we're trying to, when they turn in their payroll sheets, that they've actually got sick days on it, vacation days, different things like that on it, just so not only the department head has it, but your HR department in the city, so.
This one's for workman's comp payment.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The, this one here is for workman's comp, and what we tried to do there is if an employee becomes injured or ill on the job, they will get compensation for this from, from workman's comp. Well, what happens on that, the first seven days of the workman's comp is not paid directly to them until after the 21st day. So, on the 21st day, they receive compensation for all this time. Well, we want to continue paying that employee so they have no loss of pay. And then when we get reimbursed, or when the employee does get reimbursed from the workman's comp people, they give it back to the city for the seven days we've already paid them for.
Okay, now the floor is open for questions or comments. If there is no questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 8, 2016, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the May meeting. Thank you. General Ordinance Number 9, 2016, is up for approval on first reading only this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'll make a motion to read by title only?
The motion, I need a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. We'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Agree with title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. Now, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 9, 2016, into the record by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number 9, 2016, is an ordinance that amends Article 5 of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual pursuant to the Indiana Public Retirement System.
Thank you. When a police officer or firefighter decides to, they want to enroll in the drop program, pension program, they fill their paperwork out and submit it to the state perf. What we want to make sure is that that same, a copy of that same paperwork makes its way to the clerk's office so that we have a clear understanding of when the employee is going to leave so that we can calculate sick day buyback and when we can rehire to replace them. So that is what this ordinance is about. We want to ensure that that continues. We have, we just lost one police officer through the drop, and we have two firefighters who are in the drop right now that will be retiring in March. All of their paperwork is in order, but we want to make sure in the future that that doesn't occur. So, floor is open for questions or comments. No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 9, 2016, on first reading only.
I'll make the motion to approve General Ordinance Number 9, first reading.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the May meeting. General Ordinance Number 10, 2016, is up for approval on first reading only.
I make a motion to read it by title only?
There's a motion to read by title only? Need a second?
I'll second.
And we'll vote individually.
Agree with title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only. Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
The floor is open for questions or comments.
Mayor, I only have, the amount of time sometimes seems like it's quite a bit. There's 30 days on resignation and retirement, but I'm not going to try any amendment on first reading, but just something for the counselors maybe to think about when it comes up again.
Go ahead, Chris.
Help me understand what you're saying, buddy.
In the, in Section 1, it refers to 30-day notice on resignation, and that might be quite a bit of time, as well as retirement's the same way. So, it's something that we might want to think about. I do know that Counselor Lamping and Dave both, we had a meeting on this, and those were one of the items out of the four that came up was the, it dained to, you know, how much day of notice. The understanding of why I done it is good, but it's just something maybe to think about. Here we read this again next month.
The Personnel Manual has really never addressed an appropriate way for an employee to resign. It's really never dealt with what happens if an employee should pass away during employment, and it should, and it's really never addressed the proper way for an employee to submit their retirement. So, this ordinance does all three, and it kind of gives us some direction on, on the time needed to prepare, the department to prepare and the city to prepare for separation of employment. So, there's some really, even though we're going to do it by title only, there's some significant points in this general ordinance that you really need to take a look at.
I'm not going to move for this one. I'll let, I'll let him read this one because it's kind of, it's been at the forefront of some of our meetings here, so I was going to let him read this one.
Yeah, this is, this ordinance is starting to address the concerns that you folks had on how employees separate from employment. So, I know this is just first reading this evening, you approved the title only, but second reading and third reading, if you want to amend it especially, you really ought to read this ordinance close. This is just a starting point, but it gives us some direction on how we want to proceed in the future.
And Dennis?
Yeah.
Just for the public's knowledge, all these are on our city website, so they can review them also in case, you know, there's something in there that they might find that they'd like to see changed and contact their council person.
At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 10, 2016, into the record by title only.
We didn't vote on that, did we?
We didn't?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
Okay. I think it'd be okay, and the next time he could read it outward, or we'll have time to read it between now and then, so.
Well, it was, he kind of addressed that when he told the, the audience that it's on the website, so.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
General Ordinance Number 10, 2016, is an ordinance that adds Article 17 to the city's Personnel Manual.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 10, 2016, is up for approval on first reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the May meeting. Thank you. The final ordinance this evening is General Ordinance Number 11, 2016, is up for approval on first reading.
I'll make a motion to read by title only?
Need a second, please?
Second.
There's been a second. We'll vote individually, beginning on my left.
Agree with title only?
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 11, 2016, into the record by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number 11, 2016, is an ordinance that amends Article 3 of the City of Beach Grove's Personnel Manual pursuant to the pay plan.
Before I open it for questions or comments, I'll defer back to the clerk for explanation on this one.
Okay, this one here was the one I was referring to a minute ago. But anyway, what actually happens is the city employees, whether you're part-time, full-time, whatever, gets paid 26 pays per year. The way it is right now, most departments, alls I get is, let's say, if someone worked 80 hours in them two weeks, that's all I would have on there for their pay is 80 hours. There's no vacation sick, any of the other perks that go along with it. And so, this just helps actually where we've got it, two documentations in case, you know, since a lot of this is public record, where in case someone wanted to see something like that, it's available not only at the police station or City Hall. Actually, the sheets that I used were Brad's, and Brad does an excellent job when he turns in his time. And anyway, it's just to help make sure everybody's on the same page.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
Yeah, Dan, we're not talking about taking that information and putting it on a payroll check, are we?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just so it is actually documented in a couple of different places. What happens sometime, Bud, is I'll get records requests, and they'll want to know if whoever took off this single day, and whether they used a sick day, whether they used sick times, and so that's what it's for.
Does anybody in the city not get the 26 pays? Anybody paid differently, like?
No, everybody's paid the same 26 pays.
So, this reading, Section 2, the way it spells out, it looks like it is, looks like every department's in there, but it looks like there, by the way it's worded, there could be a department that's not getting paid that way.
Right.
I just, that might be another thing to think about amending that all departments are all employees, maybe.
Out of the 26 pays, 24 of them are paid where deductions are taken out. The other two, there are some deductions that are taken out, but not like your health insurance, things like that.
Because some of them, they meet it by the 24, as you said, twice a month.
Right.
And I had a question maybe for Mr. Wiley on the, it says here payroll records are subject to public viewing. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. How do we know that?
Pardon me?
How do we know it is?
I think it's an explicit provision in the open, in Public Records, Access to Public Records Act.
Okay.
Personnel information, I think, may be disclosed, I guess that's what it says. I do believe payroll is an explicit provision in there.
Well, we know, we know that some payroll or base pay upon anybody would be because it, but individuals spelled out, that's still okay as well, right?
Everybody's individual salary, we submit to the Marion County Treasurer every six months. That way, in case someone owes taxes, it works for the city. It's called a 100R, is submitted to them. It's public information. How much you make as a council member is public information. How much the mayor and I make, all public information.
You know what they do with that?
Well, I can just tell you, the treasurer, if you owe any taxes, they come after you for it. And it's happened since I've been clerk.
I think, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but deductions are not part of the, part of the public record. I mean, if you're paying child support or having your wages garnished, I don't believe they're allowed to know that.
I would agree with that, Chris.
Well, that was, yeah, part of when we say when we're taking an employee's full check, and each particular thing is itemized per se, and I'm glad you brought that up. And I don't, so.
See, the council passes the salary ordinance every year.
Well, the salary ordinance, yeah, is, is public, but it's not specified necessarily to a person, it's, it's to a job title, so.
Well, and I'll tell you how they get on some of this. They want to know addresses and things like that. Well, I actually had a firefighter come to me and say, you know what, I've gone 24 hours, I don't want my address on there. So, all the firefighters, we do the address at the station, and for that reason, because it's a safety factor to their spouse and dependents.
Well, the middle whereas there, and again, nothing tonight, but it might be something to think about how, how it's worded. Kind of opens up a little more than maybe it should be, but other than that, I have no other questions.
All right. Have we, we did by title only, have we voted on it yet, Dan?
No.
All right. General Ordinance Number 11, 2016, is up for approval on first reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the May 2 meeting. That concludes new business for this evening. Council comments, beginning on my far left.
Caught me off guard. I have nothing tonight.
Well, thank everybody showing up tonight, and thank gentlemen there, remember their names, all right? Thank you for showing up.
Thank everyone for showing up, and we'll get home in time to see the title game.
Your priorities are there, though.
Yeah, my priorities are there.
I want to thank everyone showing up. I want to thank citizens for their review this evening. And one last thing. I want to thank citizens for their review this evening, and one last thing, the boys are gone, but once again, congratulations to the eighth grade basketball team. Well done. Job done.
I just wanted to give a reminder that the senior citizens are having their rummage sale in April. I don't have the exact date, but we can go to the senior citizens webpage, and they'll take anything, donations, they could really use the donations, because this is the money that they, they get, the money that they get from this, this rummage sale is what they use for entertainment, and the center could really use any extra items after cleaning out your closets. They would appreciate those items for the rummage sale. And I'm going to go cover up my Arbor Day tree so it doesn't freeze.
I have no comment.
I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Couple things, counsel, before we adjourn. In your packet should have been a memorandum from the Department of Metropolitan Development for the City of Indianapolis. They have approved the comprehensive plan for Marion County. It's about sixty pages thick, and we'll try to get that to you, but that's something that they addressed with the council last year. Also, you have a street sweeping flyer that was, that the clerk distributed in your packet, and you should have a copy of the letter concerning FEMA flood control. It's what you folks adopted in March, and that letter will go out in the mail on April the nineteenth. So, kudos for this evening. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at eight fourteen PM. Thank you very much.